Vice Chair Jean Enright.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine Waldron.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
President.
Executive Director Manuel Almira.
I'm here.
Court Counsel John Fomera.
Here.
We have a call.
Wonderful. Please rise and pledge again. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the good and evil, with liberty and justice for all. Additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, we have an addition. It'll come under J. 1, New Business. And what this is, is a resolution of the Port of Palm Beach District Board, Commissioners, regarding the sale and removal of the vessel Envy Monarch Countess. You'll hear more about the status of Teeters, the status of the ship, not only from me and my executive report, but also from our attorney.
Clear.
So we'd like to add that to the agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, all favorable, opposed, carries five zero? Okay. Let's have it. Anything else?
Aye.
No?
Nothing else.
Okay. Do we have a motion approved? The agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Enright, second.
Okay.
Commissioner Richards, all favorable, opposed, carries five zero. We have approval of the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Richards, second. Commissioner Enright, all favorable, opposed, carries five zero. Presentations and announcements.
At this point, we do not have any.
Okay. Consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to ask or talk about? Okay. And if not, we have a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Richards, second. Commissioner Waldron, any discussion? All favorable, opposed, carries five zero. District reports.
Yeah, I'm up. Okay. Commissioners, I thought I'd start with a status update on the Teeters and Monarch. A federal public auction was held for the Countess on August the 4th. There were several interested parties, but the Port of Palm Beach admitted the only valid bid. There was only one other bid, but it did not qualify. We are now waiting for the federal court's authorization for confirming or the confirmation of owning the ship. Moving on, as of August 11th, the records for cargo located at the port indicate that there were 664 cars, 227 pallets, and 44 miscellaneous packages returned to their owners for a total of 935 items. Owners of automobiles that remain at the port were notified via certified mail on August 10th. Ads were placed in the local newspaper, and a notice was posted on our website, the port website. The information was translated to Creole and subsequently read as an ad on a local Haitian radio station. The campaign proved effective. Mike Meekes, our Director of Business Development Operations, shared that his phone ran off the hook. Strangely enough, owners were asking and still trying to get the vehicles shipped to Haiti. After 60 days, Commissioners, the port can take possession and sell or use an agency to sell the remaining vehicles. We're still actively out there giving back vehicles. I dare say that at this point, it's less than 100 vehicles, maybe even less, way less than that.
Oh, wow.
Particularly from where we started, yes. Moving on, Commissioners, possible partnership with the Palm Beach School District. If you recall, during the last board meeting, I mentioned that there was an interest from the city of Riviera Beach through our master planners for us to get together with Palm Beach County Superintendent Michael Burke and his Chief of Staff Jay Bogus, that's his name, so that we can comprehend and understand each other's needs for future employment. Therefore, they can provide the necessary training and teaching. During our meeting, we provided them with a brief overview of the port and began conversations about a possible partnership that would provide our local youth with job opportunities, education, and workforce development. The superintendent and his chief of staff are interested in connecting with our tenants to understand the workforce needs. We invited the representatives with the school district to our upcoming tenant coffee meeting, which will be October 4th, to present and start conversations with the business that are operating at the port. One more item, Commissioners, you heard inland port. Well, during this time since we met last, FDOT participated in a Seaport Office of Florida Department of Transportation study for the role of an intermodal logistics center. All participants were Florida Seaport Directors. Cambridge Systematic is the firm that will conduct the interviews and coordinate the data with FDOT. Essentially, Commissioners, the word from FDOT is, "Is there a need for an inland port?" In the session that I participated in, 99% said no. Instead, the money would be better served by adding land to the port. Miami was adamant, saying that they have run out of land. Everglades is very close. And as I told them, if I find two acres, we are happier than anybody can be. So all of that data has been brought back by Cambridge. They're going to include in this study that should be coming out before the end of the year. Lastly, other employment employee achievements. Please join me in congratulating our District Clerk Beatrice Griffin and our Deputy Clerk Jackie Machado. Jack, lean. We don't know what they've done yet. For the most recent career achievements, Beatrice and Jackie have completed the Certified Municipal Clerk Program through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Congratulations, ladies. Very nicely done. Scheduled, Commissioners, I will be participating in the, one of the annuals board meeting with Fested down in Key West. I may see a friend on there. Also, late September, there will be the Breakball Conference in Houston, Texas. And lastly, the AAPA, which will be October 16th through the 19th, the 111th Annual Convention Expo in Orlando, which at the end of the meeting, I will be asking if we can delay our October meeting for one week so that it wouldn't be a conflict. Are there any questions? If not, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just have a comment. I wanted to thank you for the partnership. And I know this is the first step for a journey of 1,000 miles and looking to see this come to fruition with the school board. But thanks a great deal for the first step.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, again. We've already had a little bit of an update on the master plan. Just to let you know, the progress is doing very well. We have nearly every aspect of the master plan in draft format that is being reviewed by staff. And I believe we have them making a presentation at next month's meeting. So you'll see the culmination of that master plan. I want to thank you all for how much easier you made it for me to have HDR and Moffett Nichols working together. And then we were able to do the same thing on the PID project in a little bit of reverse order. So on the PID project, our lead consultant, HDR, is working very closely with Moffett Nichols in their master plan work in the definition of the project's scope, cost, and timing of the aspects of the PIDP project. I did participate last month in several conference calls. One of them was with Merad to discuss PIDP budgets, scopes, funding, and the applicable Buy American clauses, of which there are several ways that you can do foreign purchases if necessary. The good thing about our PIDP project is we've already purchased several million dollars' worth of rail. It's all Buy America, so we're in good shape. The only other issue that could come up with not Buy America, and it's all cleared by the grant program, is a lot of our cement is imported. But of course, the aggregate is local, et cetera. So we'll have a very good project with respect to that. And we'll be asking you for a selection of our design-build team soon. Renewal replacement projects, we went over. The merchant drainage has been one of our biggest R&amp;R projects in a while. That's going very well with a contractor that we work with very closely, PB Builders, who's doing both the annex and the merchant drainage, has been excellent to work with. And of course, we'll be embarking on lots of other renewal replacement projects with the FY '23 budget that you've seen a glimpse of today. Another exciting thing going on is, of course, you know of the Berth One proposed new docks. Berth One's proposing private financing of nearly $3 million worth additions in the way of docks and pilings. Will provide for multiple additional ships, four, three to four, at any rate. We're working very closely with FDEP and with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This project, because it affects our dredging area, is going through what's called a Section 408 review. That is moving forward very well. May cause a little bit of a delay in the permitting of that, but they should see that come through fairly soon. And I'm working with the Corps of Engineers very closely to receive regular updates on the 408 review and bring that information to the Executive Director so he understands just where we are. But I do expect those permits to come in soon. That's my report for the month. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we'll see you next month.
Next item would be government affairs. Mr. Pinsky, you got anything?
No, nothing to report unless you want to expand my contract to lobby the Bahamas.
Passed. Commissioners?
I motion.
Commissioners have anything? All right, we have a question. Mr. Ward has a question, I believe.
Good afternoon again, Gerald Ward, 2135 Broadway, Riviera Beach. The port director has four items on his report this month. And basically starts out with the master plan. Again, the public has not had an outline, has not had any material, has not had the reports of each one of their interviews. And I have given you, to be handed out by the clerk, the material that was provided on the 1st and 2nd of June to the consultant staff, which unfortunately, and as your port engineer has described, you hired some folks that were here in southeast Florida and New Fath. You now have a guy that flies in on Mondays and flies back on Fridays. So we get three days a week when he's here. And the California operation is not that familiar with the Port of Palm Beach, nor southeast Florida, nor Florida's 15 deepwater ports. And more importantly, the money that is available with the Caribbean, and more importantly, the Bahamas. We need to develop that. I also, in the handout to you, gave a draft of master plan requirements. We've got a lot of things to do here. Make this port environmentally friendly. Electrify it. We've got a power plant to the south. You need to get use of the power plant, all the waterfrontage. At the same time, the power plant can produce an electrification potential for all of port operations instead of IC engines. The private-public partnership that can develop with Tropical, with other Teeters Brothers renewed users, tenants. More importantly, we haven't done what the 2015 federal authorization did. In it was a Coast Guard retrofit of the navigation aids of the port. Navigation safety should have been paramount. It was determined to be back in the mid-century of last decade. And yet, we've done nothing on it. We've done nothing for ports with NOAA. There's no reason why we don't have real-time currents and tides for this port. Every other port has got that. It's a federal project, and all we needed to do was ask and get it established. But more importantly, the navigation channel safety and settlementation modifications need to be high on the priority of the new plan.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Old business, Mr. Fomera?
H. 4.
Oh. No, there's no, Commissioners, nothing? Old business. Mr. Fomera, are you doing that?
Yes, I won. Okay. Commissioners, I want to give you a brief overview of where we are with the pending litigation involving Teeters and Monarch. And you heard a little bit about Monarch from the Executive Director. As I think most of you know, the court system does not move very quickly. But I am very pleased to report that we've accomplished a great deal in the last few months. As you'll recall, at the end of April, we filed a multi-count complaint in state court. At this point in time, we have received an eviction judgment from the court. So the port is now in possession of the Teeters property. And once it completes the work in terms of removing cars, containers, completing the environmental audits, that property can be re-let at any time in the process that you choose. In mid-July, we filed what's called a motion for summary judgment, which is a fancy way of saying, "We don't believe that there are any disputed facts in the state court case." In other words, there were agreements and leases. Those agreements and leases were broken. And pursuant to those agreements and leases were owed monies. It was very clearly set forth. So the motion is intended to get a monetary judgment. Now, to date, and I have to really compliment Takaria, she has done an amazing job of tracking every single penny, directly and indirectly, that has been spent in Teeters and Monarch matters. I mean, you have to imagine that we have to submit affidavits, detailed affidavits to the court, justifying all of the numbers. And I just want to give a shout out to Takaria for all her work in really supporting the legal team. But we have approximately $1.1 million, which we are seeking in a monetary judgment from the court. The motion's been filed, and there is a one-hour special hearing that's going to take place on September 23rd at 9:00 a.m. Where we're going to argue our motion before the State Court Judge Judge Kerner. On a parallel track, we are continuing a dialogue with John Turner, the attorney for Teeters, in an effort to reach an agreed order to move this process forward faster. But nonetheless, on a parallel track, we've also sent out discovery in the state court case. And that's really to identify all of the property that's owned by Teeters and the Principals. Real property, personal property, from buildings to cars to land. And so that is out there because once we get our monetary judgment, and we will get it, the only question is not if, it's when, then we're going to have to execute that judgment. It's a somewhat laborious process, but getting the writs of execution to go after specific equipment, real property, personal property, homes, non-homestead homes, and things of that nature. So that's the order in which that will go forward. We get that judgment, which will hopefully be at our September 23rd hearing. And then we'll execute the judgment to recover the monies, which of course, day-by-day increase. Real importantly, I mean, again, the port staff has done an amazing job with the vehicles. When, you know, I don't know what the, I heard numbers, up to 1,000 vehicles there, but they've really done an outstanding job. So one of the big efforts moving forward is to clear out the remaining vehicles and the remaining containers, what I'll collectively call the Teeters leased property. And we were very, very pleased to receive a state court judgment on August 3rd that allows us now to go ahead and move forward with the process to dispose of the remaining vehicles and cargo that have not been claimed by the former Teeters customers. And we proposed, and the court agreed on a process to make one last-ditch effort to get notice out to the public in case they have their vehicles or cargo here. So it's a process that allow, it's a 60-day notice to the former customers. We all spent a good deal of time composing a letter that very clearly spelled out what needed to be done to claim their property. That letter was translated, it was in English and translated in Creole. That letter was sent out via certified mail because we have a 60-day window to complete this notice process. So the court order specifies 60 days' notice to the former Teeters customers. We also published notice in the Palm Beach Post. We published notice in the Creole newspaper of general circulation that serves Palm Beach County. We're also doing onsite and online notice, again, in English and Creole, to any potentially affected parties to make sure we reach to any of these remaining customers to retrieve their vehicles and cargo. The certified letters went out on August 10th, which means the magic day is October 11th. We will have completed all of the steps, including the public notices, so that we begin the process of selling the vehicles, the equipment. I can tell you that I personally have received a half dozen inquiries over the last few months from individuals interested in buying all of the remaining used vehicles. I know the staff has probably received similar inquiries. I think we all know the used car market and used car parts pricing has skyrocketed. So there's a very robust market. So we're hoping that we'll get some good monies from whatever is left behind.
What's the date that might happen for us to be able to sell them?
October 11th is our, any time after October 11th. That's the day after the 60-day window when, since we've already initiated the public notice.
Okay.
And we definitely will talk to you about the process. One thing that is interesting about this district is the breadth of options it has available in terms of disposing of property. We've amended the agenda to add a resolution I drafted. I'll talk to you about that momentarily. So we've just talked about the state court case. Now, the federal court case. That's just, that's admiralty law dealing with the vessel, the Monarch. And as you heard from the Executive Director, you know, we filed that complaint in the United States District Court, a federal court, on April 28th. On May 6th, we received an order appointing the port as custodian. Keep in mind, and we'll get into momentarily, you know, the Monarch is currently under a Coast Guard order to be removed by the start of hurricane season. And as you all know, the Monarch is derelict, unflagged, and unmanned. And so it'll have to, will have to tug away. So we're really wanting to move very quickly. So on July 5th, the federal District Court Judge entered an order authorizing the expedited sale of the Monarch. The U.S. Marshal was directed to sell the vessel at a public auction. And as you already heard, the only qualifying bidder was the port. You know, it's remarkable. We had so much interest, so many inquiries. I fielded, but when it was showtime, a few people showed up, and they weren't prepared and did not follow the protocols that were required to actually bid in the auction. But even since the auction, I have received two additional inquiries from folks. And so we have a motion pending with the court to have title to the vessel transferred to the port. So even though we're the successful bidder, the District Court Judge has to look at the process, bless it, and then convey title to the port. That will be happening within the next couple of weeks. On August, no, the date, I don't think that's right, but I have August 30th. But sometime in the next few weeks, the court will be entertaining our motion. Now, in terms of disposing of the vessel, you know, we have the Coast Guard order. You, as a commission, have some options here. We could go through our own public auction process, retain an auctioneer, conduct an auction here on the port property. Another option would be to go through what I call a sealed bid process. All those options take time. And you all know this. Putting together an RFP, an RFQ, or even a sealed bid process, you've got to prepare all the solicitation documents. You have to go through a public notice process. You have to go through a process to review the proposals, and so on and so forth. And with that Coast Guard order, hurricane season, one other option that's available to you is to just do a private sale. In your charter, you have the authority to do private sales. And so I have prepared for your discussion and, you know, consideration, a resolution that would essentially delegate, it would find that it is in the interest of the port and the public health, safety, and welfare to not have a derelict vessel during hurricane season there. And it would be a delegation of authority from the commission to the Executive Director to establish a process for an expedited private sale to the highest bidder. And the highest bidder would also include some criteria, not just the biggest dollar amount, but who could also commit in a legally binding way to remove the vessel in a timely manner. So that's that item, I don't know if, J. 1?
It's in J. 1?
Okay, so that's, and if you have any questions, I can address them on J. 1 or now.
Do we have to wait till we get the title before we sell it? Or can we sell it subject to the item?
No, we have to wait, but it's imminent. And it will occur before our next commission meeting.
Right. So we, I think, as a group, unless I'm mistaken, we're going to go through the resolution coming up, basically saying whoever comes and has a certified check and can take the ship out of here without, you know, quickly, is kind of what we're looking to do. I would presume anybody has anything else? No, we want it out. And like I say, we kind of know it's going to be scrapped.
And reasonable number that he will determine.
Yes.
And please keep in mind, we have evaluation. We hired a professional to come in, view the ship, and issue a report. So we have a range of salvage value so that, you know, it's not really just up to the Executive Director. He has some backing in terms of what's reasonable.
I just wanted to, just my only concerns, just for the sake of transparency in reading number two, if you can just provide the board with the process for the expedited private sale. I just need, you know, just to have something formally in writing. This is the process that we're going to endeavor on just for transparency. And I don't know how long, because I, you know, I know we have times of the essence. But if you can just provide the board with- but if you can just provide the board with that information and maybe, I don't know, maybe two days, you know, anything, notice of any of that.
Yep. So if I may, Mr. Chair, yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Anderson. So over the last six months, because there have been newspaper articles, we've gotten dozens of inquiries. My office has maintained a list of every single person and company that has inquired. We have all of their contact information. In fact, we gave that list to the marshal. And we made sure that when the public notice was produced by the marshal, all those people received public notice. We can put an ad in the Palm Beach Post as well, and also send, use that, that list that we have created that has over 20 companies and individuals that have exhibited some interest.
I think more important than the Palm Beach Post, a marine-related, yeah, we don't, the Post is not a good thing, but a marine-related circulation.
Or someone that buys scrap, I mean, it's not gonna be.
We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we will definitely.
The penny saver would be a good one, you might get it from there.
Yeah, the, the executive directors told me that we know of companies that are involved in marine salvage and we're, you know, it's incumbent upon us and in our interest to create a, as long a potential interested party list as possible and get notice out to them and a deadline by which we will entertain offers.
Yeah, we'll give them a short window, no open house. We want, we'll give them, you know, a certain amount of time, we'll let the director decide with your, you know, opinion, and then we'll, you know, we'll get rid of it.
And we literally did have an open house, by the way, as part of the U.S. Marshals process. We had two days that were set aside where you had to have an appointment, but if you contacted us, you could come and inspect the ship. And there was a few entities that took advantage of that, but, you know, we wanted to be transparent.
Right.
So people knew what they were getting, and they could look at it, walk through it. Of course, they had to sign waivers and all that good stuff.
Right. All right. All right, so there's no motion we need on this until we get to the resolution coming up on J1?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we go to, let's see, I2.
Commissioners, this is a really simple one that I know you could make a motion right now and move forward on, but I wanted to make, bring up two items. One, we're transferring eighty-seven, eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars from funding that was already allocated for the environmental assessment of the Ozinga parcel. And when that money wasn't spent, that became available to us. So the next thing that happens here is we're able to do this work with some of that transferred money from Ozinga, which limits the amount that we have to add to it, there's still a significant amount to get to the forty-one thousand. Another point I want to make before I request the, the motion is that we've, we're gonna talk in the future about paving. We know how important paving is, and I mentioned it a little bit. Give you an idea, the Northern Parcel, which is what we've called the Mullins Parcel, the environment, Phase II environmental mountain will cost thirty-four thousand five hundred of the total here, while the much larger Southern Parcel is only seven thousand dollars. That shows you how much paving helps us. And my goal over the next year and a half, two years, is to bring any unpaved parcels up to full drainage and paving.
We have a motion, second.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Commissioner Richard.
Second.
Commissioner Henry. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero. Okay.
Next item, I3 is pretty simple, just want approval from you to issue a request for a proposal, so I can get some of our equipment moved off the dock.
Second. Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Waldron, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Okie dokie.
Who approved I4?
Go ahead, you have anything? You want to say?
I was just gonna make the motion.
Bust your balloon. Commissioner Richard says a motion, second by Commissioner Henry, any discussion?
Yes, well.
Good, all in favor, all opposed? Oh, I didn't, you have something?
So there, is there a motion?
Yes, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Second discussion, I just want to go for the record that I will be not voting in favor of the increase.
Okay. All right.
You said there hasn't been tariff increase in?
There's a.
There's a, they gave us a.
Hold on a second, yeah. During this, so is in the.
So this is just for the contractors and the people that aren't on?
This is in, in general, tariff increase in general. If you notice, last year was only five, a year before it was one, and the year before that, there's no increase.
I have a question. So you, you mentioned that there was input at the public, from the tenants. I know one tenant vehemently is, does not agree with this. What feedback did you get from those meetings about the tariff increase?
We did get some feedback, but in general, it was initially was opposing the 5%, but not to the point where, after we talked through the reason for the increase, they were on board, at least I thought they were.
Can you go to the public comment section?
We have some slides where the, the public, we captured.
We don't have to go through the slides.
Okay.
No, we don't need that. I mean, I've never, as long as I've been here, I don't think I've ever had any tenant say, I'm in favor of your tariff increase. So, you know, I mean, it's not like, you know, 5% is mild.
But you are saying that at the end of the meetings, you believe with explanations there was, there was general agreement, or they were not as upset?
Not as upset.
As upset. Well, that makes sense.
Thank you for the information.
I have one other quickie. At all the ports, are they in line or they're higher than out here, at Port Everglades?
I think all port to a degree operates independently.
I know that, but.
And so they all have different business model, different diversification of business, if you will. So it's very hard to compare that way. But we do host this year a port council meeting where Canaveral and JTA Jacksonville came down and some others, and they were all looking to do increases to their, their tariff. They did not disclose the exact rate, but I wouldn't imagine it's, it's in line with what we're proposing.
Right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, all opposed?
I'm against, I'm saying no.
I'm opposed.
Carries three to two.
Fail.
Fail. I'm opposed.
All right, you made the motion to approve it and then voted against it?
That's correct.
Okay. And now is there a number that?
We have to do something.
Bring it back, let's move.
Bring what back?
Bring this up, rework it, bring it up.
So who voted against it? You and?
Me.
Commissioner Anderson.
It's okay, they can go back and work, it's okay. The law will get, will die.
All right.
I would be amenable to see a, a more modest increase than the 5%, that's just me. And because when I'm looking at the pre-pandemic levels and I'm already seeing two of our tenants struggle, and we're just coming out of the pandemic, I think that's, you know, but the cost of living and everything else that's added to it. So I'm just one commissioner, but I would be amenable to more of a incremental, lesser incremental.
Bring it back in November.
We'll bring it back.
Just a point of note, this will impact the proposed budget, so.
Okay.
Are we bringing it back in November or this summer?
No, next month.
September.
September.
That's three weeks away.
Yes, that's three weeks, so they might need more time next meeting.
I think we're, you were, it's okay.
We'll just bring it back when you, when you have, just take your time, take your time.
New business. We have one item, the resolution.
Yes.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Commissioner Anderson, we have second, Commissioner Richards, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five zero. Comments by the Puff Gerald Ward.
Good afternoon again, Gerald Ward, 2135 Broadway, Riviera Beach. Three things, or three and a half things. Number one, the R and R, you did make a start with merchants to start doing some of the maintenance. We've got lots of other things. I didn't realize this until I started looking at some Google Maps last year about this time and said, you know, there's a whole bunch of the port that looks like it doesn't have any maintenance. You can tell from areas. The rail is underway. That's a 40 to 50-year project. We did this planning in the first half of the seventies to fix the rail. The federal project, you've got the authorization 2014, 2015. Simple things like the 25 million dollars, which is a separate item for U.S. Coast Guard nav aid maintenance. Somebody's got to prosecute the federal project authorization. It's going to expire in about two years or so. We need to get some of that work done. They did a survey two years ago, detailed exactly what they needed. Next week, 31st, federal ports, Florida Port Council comes to Key West. EFTED has its annual meeting down there. You need to look at the four items on that agenda and see whether you're really happy with them. They haven't really been notarized till EFTED puts them out. Office of Economic Opportunity of the State of Florida is supporting four items for this port, but look what the other ports are getting. Last thing, back on the master plan. It's dependent not upon you guys, but upon Palm Beach County to get adopted. You're obligated by statute to give it to them six months in advance of the adoption date. We're already gonna be late then to meet the deadline that was originally established for the end of this year. The projects that are also on board with the federal money that you discussed at the last meeting need to go. That's part of the rail. Got to get the master plan done, get that done. Again, the public needs to be involved because I can tell you that the tenants, the citizens of Riviera Beach, somebody like me, we're gonna have a lot of comments. I gave you out earlier in the meeting a list of things that needed to be done. I've been doing master plans for 50 years, so you do it fine, it's good. See you.
Thank you very much. Mary, come on down.
Good afternoon, I'm C. address my address. Good to see you guys. First of all, I would like to just to congratulate Dr. Deandre Poole for his seat that he would take on this board. He will be a great, great access to this board here. He will be workable as usual, because that is his profession, to be workable and not to be laboring. We must do business where we should not labor. We must all come prepared and we can be agreeable as well as disagreeable. I say congratulations to Port Commissioner Walden as well. There, there. And especially Shilla Seifus McCorrigan. This is the thing about ladies, you don't disrespect ladies. Whatever or however you may feel about us, keep it to yourself, because we would be like termites on you. And this just what we proved all along the Western Cardas. We sat back and we let them do what they needed to do. And we comes in and we do what we know to do. That's the difference of a person that was saying, we would not intercede in no backlash and run your race. And whoever wins that race there, we say congratulations, because for the job to get done, it takes everybody to do the job. And for every hindsight, it's an insight. So this is how we become workable with each other, agreeable as well, as well as disagreeable. So I wish you all, and the board, very well. I have some questions and I would like for someone to get back with me. The warehouse that, I mean, Commissioner Wayne represented, do the port has a stake in that warehouse? Because it was made mention that you all would utilize those bay areas out there. We still would like to know what would go into those areas. And also, I attended some of the workshops that the port had, so it was very interesting. And I really, really did a lot of intake as well as notes, so please proceed forward. And across the street there is a cement plant. I would like to know if Ozinga and cement, is that part of that cement plant across from there, where my children have a head start there? And I'm making school this there, because if it is, if you as a port, if you are a stake in these projects, we ask that you be mindful and clean it up and make sure.
Okay, thank you. We'll have staff get back.
We'll get back.
Yep, okay. Anita Mitchell?
Anita.
Anita, wake up, come on.
First, congratulations, Commissioner Waldron, district chairman, commissioners, director. I've got three pieces of news that is promised, I've got a little bit every week. For the first time in the history of the cruise line, we sold out three days last week and the average passenger, I think, was 800. That was small. We look forward to just continuing to grow. We've, I was at an all-day meeting yesterday, want to let you know, you will meet many of them. We've brought on some significant corporate execs that have tremendous hospitality and tourism background, so they'll be coming for you in one of the meetings. Gonna meet, I think, with the director first and the staff. I have hired a wonderful lady who you meet, who's gonna take on the community relations part more actively, so Commissioner Siklin doesn't have to hand, hand out our brochures at chambers of commerce meetings. We have a few new billboards going up, and the really good news is that I think you're going to see a lot more visibility from Margaritaville at sea. We've got a new ad agency that's just been hired out of Atlanta that's as close to national as I've seen since I've been here, and a new PR firm that has actually worked, they're pretty, they're out of Florida, but they're, they do a lot of national work. They've actually headed up and represented, discovered the Palm Beaches from here, but they're, they're very big at SeaWorld. So you're gonna see some changes there that I think some of you who have commented over the years that maybe we've been a little lacking, I think it's probably gonna make you smile a little bit. So that, that is all my news, and I hope you all have a good week.
Thank you very much. That's very encouraging. Okay, Ms. Das, Verissa Das.
My name is Verissa Das. I just wanted to thank all of you port commissioners for the great work that you do in our community. I also wanted to sincerely congratulate Dr. Deandre Poole on his victory Tuesday night. I know that if he is elected, he will represent our community well. Additionally, you know, I just want to say, win or lose, when we all work together, the community wins, and that's what matters. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Next meeting will be September the 15th. Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. Commissioners, comments? Catherine?
I just have, I just have two things to say. First, congratulations to Catherine Waldron, who will be in the House of Representatives in town.
Well, she's still having an election.
Oh, you have an election. Also, Dr. Deandre.
General election.
Dr. Don, Dr. Deandre Poole, who won his election by 51% of the vote with three candidates in the race, could not be here today because this is the first week of school at Florida Atlantic. Atlantic University, and he teaches there at FAU for the last 10 years, so he's at work now. But his schedule will be adjusted, and he can attend all our meetings at 4:00, but he just wanted me to let you know that he's teaching the graduate class tonight, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Two quick things. Mr. Almir, would you kindly email us the EFTED items impacting the port of Palm Beach or the, Mr. Ward's comments?
Sure.
Get for us to know that. And two, Ms. Williams, we approved 99% of your budget. Three of us gave you some slight pushback in the tariff, not a big deal, we'll say go back and work it, work it a little, sharpen your pencil, please, and we'll see you next month.
Noted.
It's okay. The, the whole front row looked shocked. When has this happened before? We're paying attention. So just please, please, sharpen your pencil. You guys leave a brief chat.
I think you can sharpen your pencil, but I think it would be wise for any of the commissioners that have questions on why, I think that maybe is why it was 5%, not 8% or 2% or 1%. So, you know, I think these times are much different than anything we've seen in a long time. So I encourage that all the commissioners that have specific questions why it was 5, not 3, not 10, not 2.
I don't have a question, but I understand, but thank you.
I mean, I have, you know, I, maybe I should have, I thought 5 was a break, to tell you the truth. I know that a lot of our tenants have increased fees four or five times as much as 5%. So, you know, like I say, we've got to be, make a living too, and, you know, like I say, I, I think if you can justify the 5, if you have to go down to 4, you know, so be it.
We'll bring back several options.
They can just work with him.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Siklin, I just want to, I just want to, my, my closing comments, I first of all, would like to congratulate my colleague, Commissioner Waldron, as well as the congressman, Congresswoman, Sheila McCormick. But I wanted to also congratulate Dr. DeAndre Poole on his victory. But I wanted to also give words of encouragement to Verissa Das, because she has been here actually attending the meetings, as well as served on our citizen advisory, TPA, and our audit committee. So I wanted to just give you words of encouragement to let you know that I too ran twice unsuccessfully, but through perseverance, now I sit before you. I'm not running for reelection, and he will hold his seat, but I encourage you to stay engaged. And lastly, I, I wanted to also, you know, thank the words from, I know sometimes we don't like to hear criticism, but I do concur with some of what Commissioner Ward, and that's one of the things that I've always advocated for, is the, definitely the infrastructure improvement of this port. And I'm, I'm glad to see that we're moving in a step in the right direction, but I wanted to say, you know, Mr. Ward, that your words are not on deaf ears. And lastly, because I stepped away from the position, I still will remain vigilant. And I think it's disheartening or disingenuous for individuals to come and to spouse, you know, innuendos and false allegations. And it was the allegation that was put on the table, because individuals don't get their way. And I'm speaking directly to Mrs. Brown. When you sit up here and you put different innuendos out and, and accost one of our commissioners, and then myself, as actually being, taking deals, and having construction companies and individuals, and it was in a statement that was made, that one of the commissioners voted, which was my wife, voted on a particular item, and that I will reap the benefits. First of all, just because you say something 10 times, doesn't make it true. And for the record, my company is in an inactive status, and that is because I work for the Palm Beach County. And my license is in a voluntary inactive status. So therefore, I am not pursuing any work, either with the port, or with the city of Riviera Beach, or any entity that's doing business with the both of them. So I cannot speak to, and I'm sure Mr. Richards will opine on, or if he chooses not to, but I just think it's disingenuous for you just to throw something out there in the air and that negative vibe. And since I've been on this dais, I've always treated staff, each and every one of you, with professionalism, as I can, you know, from day to day. And I will still remain vigilant in our community to dismiss these misnomers and wrong innuendos and be a voice for the people. So therefore, you can have an alternate voice, because I don't get paid to come to a microphone, I don't get paid to come to any events or whatnot. I serve at the pleasure of our community. And just a quote from the poet Henley, "I am the master of my faith, I am the captain of my soul." Thank you.
All right, next meeting is September 15th, 4:00, is that correct? Did you say we have to change something, is that correct? Okay, all right.
Why do you need to change October?
We all set? We adjourned?
We're adjourned.